Welcome, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. It's Monday, October 5th. It's seven o'clock. Called this meeting to order. We have with us tonight Pastor Will Watts from Life Church Smyrna, Assembly of God, 4100 King Springs Road. I'd invite Pastor Watts up. Would everybody please rise for the invocation and pledge?
Let us pray. Gracious Lord, we come before you tonight from a land that has become increasingly more and more divided. And we acknowledge the truth of your word, that if a house is divided against itself, that house will not be able to stand. We also acknowledge the truth in your word, that if we need wisdom, that we may ask our generous God, and you will give it to us. And you will not rebuke us for asking. In light of these truths, I ask that you grant wisdom and immunity to this council and all who are in attendance. While we may have disagreements on policy, may everyone in attendance support each other, dignity and respect out of shared humanity and citizenship. Bless our mayor, bless our councilmen and councilwomen, and bless this nation. Buried in the mighty name of Jesus that we pray.
Pastor, thanks for being with us. Next on the agenda is item 3A 2020-385. It's a proclamation in recognition of National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. I'm going to turn this over to our Mayor Pro Tim, Mr. Tim Gould. He's got a constituent who this has affected, and he's got the proclamation as well. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The issue is one that really probably affects so many of us, but maybe it doesn't receive the recognition that it's due, and probably more importantly, the lack of information and resources out there available for families that have encountered tragic losses with lost pregnancies or infant loss and deaths of that sort. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Todd and Ruth Defoe for highlighting the issue and asking the city to recognize October 15th as the recognition of National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. I'm just going to read a proclamation, and then it'll come down. And I think Todd, Todd and Ruth, would you want to come on up to the podium? And then after I read the recognition, you're welcome to say a few remarks. Thanks again for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
"A proclamation by the mayor of the City of Smyrna in recognition of National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Whereas each year, approximately 1 million pregnancies in the United States end in miscarriage, stillbirths, or the death of a newborn baby. And whereas, according to a 2018 study by the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, Georgia ranked number seven nationally with 888 deaths, a rate of seven deaths per 1,000 live births. And whereas, the availability of information and support is of the utmost importance to families who suffer from pregnancy and infant loss to help them cope. And whereas, a public that is informed and educated about pregnancy and infant loss can better learn how to respond with compassion to affect families. And whereas, the observance of Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day may provide validation to those who have suffered a loss through miscarriage, stillbirth, or other complications. And whereas, recognizing Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day would enable the people of the United States to consider how, as individuals and communities, they can meet the needs of bereaved mothers, fathers, and family members, and work to prevent the causes of these deaths. And whereas, in 1988, President Ronald Reagan declared October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month to honor the unique grief of bereaved parents who suffer such a loss. And whereas, October 15th has been designated as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day to remember all pregnancies and infants lost in order to heal and comfort during a time of pain and heartache, and to have hope for the future. Now, therefore, I, Derek Norton, Mayor of City of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim October 15th, 2020, to be Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in Smyrna, Georgia, and urge all citizens to join in this observance. A witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Smyrna to be affixed upon this fifth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2020. Derek Norton, Mayor of Smyrna." I'll come down and give this to you.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I certainly wish I could say that it was for a happier reason that brings us here today. But it is important for everyone who has lost a child that we pause and commemorate Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. It's hard to believe that more than 51,000 infants die every year in this country. In 2018, 888 infants died in Georgia alone. That's more than two every day. Sadly, the infant mortality rate in our state is one of the worst in the country. And most people aren't influencers, so the media and the public don't necessarily take notice, but that doesn't make their loss any less painful. In fact, all of us probably know someone who has encountered such a loss. As Tim mentioned, my wife Ruth and I lost our son three years ago. A lot of people don't talk about their loss. They go about their daily routines, going to work, going to the store, and to the outside world it might seem like they haven't experienced a tragedy. But I can assure you, it's on their mind every day. It's a difficult topic to discuss, and many try to steer the conversation to another direction, in another direction. And believe me, I wish I could say that I was here, we were here, to discuss another topic, but this is one that is very important to us. For parents who have lost a child, there is no day, there is no month to commemorate the loss. It's every day. We can't expect to solve a problem unless we first acknowledge it. And sadly, when it comes to infant mortality, it's a conversation that makes many people uncomfortable. A resolution like this will not solve this tragedy, but it will help raise awareness. And hopefully, that awareness will lead to change. Thank you for taking time to pass this resolution. Let's hope that we can soon celebrate the end of infant deaths, because no one should ever experience the loss of an infant. Thank you.
Thank you all for being with us and bringing that forward to us. Appreciate you all. Item four is land issues, zonings, annexations. The first item, and the only item under that category, is going to be tabled. I'll go ahead and read it, and then we'll vote on it. It's item 4A 2019-440. Public hearing zoning request Z19-019. It's rezoning from NRC NOI to MU for the development of 170-unit independent senior living facility and 114 townhomes at a density of 11.85 units per acre, 23.95 acres, landlot 775, 810 and 811, 2320 Campbell Road, Inline Communities LLC. And this item will be tabled to the October 19th, 2020 Mayor and Council meeting at the request of the applicant. May I have a motion? Motion to table Mr. Pickens. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. That'll be tabled till the 19th. Five is privileged licenses. We have two tonight. 5A license 2020-16, privileged license request for cigar specialty shop. License 2020-16, beer, wine, and liquor pouring, 1295 West Spring Street, Southeast, Suite 130. Village Bourbon and Cigar LLC, doing business as Village Bourbon and Cigar with Anthony F. Alvarez as the agent. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Application for privileged licenses for Village Bourbon and Cigar LLC, doing business as Village Bourbon and Cigar, for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor, retail pouring. Village Bourbon and Cigar LLC is the owner, and Anthony F. Alvarez is the agent applicant. Anthony F. Alvarez will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at 1295 West Spring Street, Southeast, Suite 130. Mr. Alvarez has been given a copy of the alcoholic beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to reveal information that would preclude the issuance of this license. Anthony F. Alvarez has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. And Anthony, thank you for doing business in Smyrna with the wine market and for all that you've done during COVID to make sure it's safe for everybody. I know you've been very excited about this new venture for quite some time and looking forward to seeing what's to come. This is in Mr. Lindley's district. Mr. Lindley.
Hey, Anthony. Good to see you this evening. And as the mayor said, thank you for doing business in Smyrna, and thank you for looking to expand your business. As Mr. Bennett noted, you've taken the requisite course and understand the restrictions, ordinance, and laws. All right. Thank you, sir. Motion due pass is presented.
Anything you want to tell us about the new establishment before we vote? Very good. Very good. Looking forward to it. All right, we have them. Go ahead.
Well, I was just, if you could tell us a little even more, because this is an opportunity on television for those people that watch.
Pre-marketing.
Oh, thank you. So, the genesis of this actually did not begin with me. It began with my customer base. And I was seeing quite a few that were actually leaving the Smyrna area to be able to go and perform, you know, smoking of cigars or having a drink outside of Smyrna. They were going to the Battery. They were going to Atlanta. And very soon, they'll be able to go to the Marietta Square because something is opening up there. So I thought in an opportunity for us to keep the dollars here in Smyrna, to keep people from leaving our area to be entertained somewhere else. So that was the genesis of it. And so we will have approximately, within the guidelines of all the ordinances, we will have about 250 different cigars, which is quite a large selection. And we'll be carrying over 2,000 to 2,500 cigars in total in inventory. Our idea to have bourbon or brown liquors, other liquors, wine, and beer is just to add to the experience. And I am very aware of the guidelines set forth in the ordinance, so I will be sure to adhere by them.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions of Anthony? All right, we have a motion to approve. Item 5A. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it, Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys.
Item B, license 2020-17, privileged license request for cigar specialty shop. License 2020-17, beer, wine, and liquor pouring, 2417 Cobb Parkway. Wise Ash Two LLC, doing business as Wise Ash Cigars with Brian Boweare as agent. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Application for privileged licenses for Wise Ash Two LLC, doing business as Wise Ash Cigars for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor, retail pouring. Wise Ash Two LLC is the owner, and Brian Boweare is the agent applicant. Brian Boweare will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at 2417 Cobb Parkway. Mr. Boweare has been given a copy of the alcoholic beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to reveal information that would preclude the issuance of this license. Brian Boweare has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, sir, also, for doing business here. This is in Mr. Pickens' district. Mr. Pickens.
Hey, Brian. Thanks for being here tonight. Just to confirm, you've taken all the necessary courses and know the laws and ordinances for liquor pouring?
I have.
Okay. And could you tell us also about your business?
Sure. My name is, of course, Brian Boweare. We have acquired Wise Ash Cigars approximately about three months ago and have been associated with the shop for over three years. Wise Ash has been a staple in the Smyrna community for over 10 years. And it's just been a great experience and really enjoy doing business in the city of Smyrna, as well as I am a former law enforcement agent, a police officer from Rock Hill, South Carolina, with over 20 years. So this is sort of like my second retirement.
Thank you. Motion to approve license 2020-17.
Any other questions or comments from the applicant? All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Thank you, sir, for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Item six is formal business. 6A 2020-379, appointment of Parks and Rec Director Richard Garland to serve as a regular member of the License and Variance Board, interim Assistant City Administrator Penny Misherri to serve as an alternate member of the License and Variance Board, and the Deputy City Clerk to serve as an alternate member of the License and Variance Board. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you. With the recent departure of former City Administrator Tammy Sadler Jones, a vacancy has been created on the License and Variance Board. Additionally, Kevin Moore, our City Engineer, has served as an alternate for the board. But in his capacity, again as City Engineer, he is required to make recommendations and review License and Variance Board requests. In order to maintain transparency and avoid a conflict of interest, his term as an alternate will expire on September 30th, 2020. Ordinance 2005-33 states, "The License and Variance Board shall select one of its members to serve as chair and one of its members to serve as secretary, to serve at the pleasure of the License and Variance Board. Minutes and records of all proceedings shall be kept by the secretary or his or her designee and maintained in the office of the City Clerk. Therefore, the office of the Deputy City Clerk will serve as an alternate member and be offered for appointment as the secretary to take the official meeting minutes for the board. The License and Variance Board will vote at their regularly scheduled meeting on October 14th, 2020, to appoint a chair and a secretary." All members of the board, current regular board members are Fire Chief Roy Akery and Public Works Director Frank Martin. Current alternate board members are Deputy Fire Chief Brian Marcos, Library Director Mary Moore, and City Engineer Kevin Moore. His term to expire 9/30/2020. The Community Development Director recommends appointment of Parks and Rec Director Richard Garland to serve as a regular member of the License and Variance Board, interim Assistant City Administrator Penny Misherri to serve as an alternate member of the License and Variance Board, and the Deputy City Clerk to serve as an alternate member of the License and Variance Board.
Any discussion from council or questions of Joe before we move on? Mr. Lindley, will you handle this item, please?
Sure. Motion due pass is presented on item 2020-379.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Welsh. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item 6B, 2020-384, appointment of Human Resources Director Carol Sickard as the interim Civil Service Board Clerk until the incoming Human Resources Manager Patrick Ho can be appointed on October 19th, 2020. Mr. Bennett.
Yes, sir. By job description, the Human Services Manager serves as the Civil Service Board Clerk. The Human Resources Manager position was vacated on August 28th, 2020. Human Resources Director Carol Sickard will serve as the interim Civil Service Board Clerk until the incoming Human Resources Manager Patrick Ho can be appointed at next Mayor and Council meeting on October 19th, 2020.
Is it Sickard? I've been saying Sickard. Well, thank you for correcting me. I have to apologize to her. Any discussion or questions from council? All right. Mr. Wheaton, you want to handle this one?
Sure. Thank you so much. Just to make a motion to pass, item 6B, 2020-384.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Thank you. Item 6C, 2020-394, approval of a short-term extension to the bus shelter advertising contract through December 31st, 2020, for the 32 bus shelters located within the city and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Our bus shelter contract with Signal Outdoor is expiring on October 4th, 2020. City staff is recommending the approval of a short-term contract extension with Signal Outdoor, ending on 12/31/2020. The extension will be at no additional cost to the city, and Signal will continue to provide trash collection and basic upkeep as they have previously provided while we go through the RFP process. At the end of the contract extension, Signal will sign over ownership of the shelters per the terms of our original contract. Staff recommends a short-term extension to the bus shelter through December 31st, 2020.
And then the idea is with the RFQ that we'll have a lot better service and maybe some extra options, advertising and different things like that, right?
That is correct.
Ms. Wilkinson, you want to handle this one?
Sorry. I'll move to approve item 6C, 2020-394, approval of a short-term extension to the bus shelter advertising contract through December 31st, 2020, for the 32 bus shelters located within the city and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item seven, commercial building permits. We have one. 7A 2020-380, issuance of a commercial building permit for the construction of a 75-unit independent senior living apartment building called Hurth Side, 4225 East West Connector, Walton Construction Services LP. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Commercial building permit has been issued at 4225 East West Connector for the construction of a new four-story, 87,278-square-foot building made of 75 units of senior living apartments known as Hurth Side. The total estimated cost of the project is $10,500,000, and Walton Construction Services LP is listed as a general contractor for the project.
This is in Ward seven. Mr. Wheaton.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for the background. This is really a building permit for which there was approval in the prior council to have this built. And we actually looked at a modification of this a couple meetings back. So they're out there. They're ready to get going, ready to start building this property, a good setting for seniors that are living adjacent to the Silver Comet Trail and close to a lot of facilities. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7A, 2020-380, the issuance of a commercial building permit for construction of the 75-unit independent senior living apartment building called Hurth Side.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Welsh. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, 2020-382, approval of the September 21st, 2020, pre-council meeting minutes. Item B, 2020-383, approval of the September 21st, 2020, Mayor and Council meeting minutes. Item C, 2020-397, approved request for the road closure at Old Spring Road intersection on the north side of Wendy Hill Road, beginning October 9th, 2020, through October 23rd, 2020, as requested by Baldwin Paving Company for the construction of a temporary road for a lane shift on the Wendy Hill Boulevard project. And item D, Resolution 2020-11, adopt Resolution 2020-11, rescinding, withdrawing, and abandoning the Declaration of Taking, issued July 20th, 2020, for the tract of land known as a portion of 2415 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, and located in Land Lot 346 of the 17th District of Cobb County, owned by Glenwood Properties LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion due pass.
Motion for Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item nine is Ward and Committee Reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Wagner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just was going to remind everyone that early voting for the election starts next week, and we're going to have a location here at the community center, starting next Monday, the 12th, and through the 30th, Monday through Friday, you'll have from 7:00 to 7:00 to come vote. And then on those two Saturdays in between there, you'll have from 8:00 to 5:00 to come vote. And so, early vote, turn in your absentee ballot at one of the drop boxes around. And as we talked about the last meeting, there's one at Wendy Hill Community Center. It's probably the closest one to here. Just want to remind everyone, no matter who you're voting for, get out there and have your voice heard and vote in the upcoming election.
Has the election board done anything else to make it more convenient for our residents to vote?
Well, we have some more hours than we normally do, so I'll give them credit there.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only thing of note, this week, we'll be having a second Church Street neighborhood update on the upgrades to Church Street on Wednesday night. It's 6:30. For information for anybody joining from home, just visit the city website. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Just want to let some of the residents know that are part of Ward five that are also affected by the church road improvements, that they might want to attend the meeting that Councilman Lindley just mentioned. And with that, a yield.
Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To pick up on previous comments by Councilman Wagner, there is a
a drop box at Cobb Fire Station Number Four on Cumberland Boulevard, which is super close to Ward Six. So it's not in the city, but it's fairly close. So I dropped my absentee ballots off there today. So if you're proposing, if you're leaning towards absentee ballots, please get them in, drop them off at a drop box, or get them in the mail as soon as possible, or join early voting, or definitely show up on November 3rd. There's a few things on the ballot that impact the City of Smyrna and particularly Sploes. So please read up on that. It's really, it's a critical thing for our city and for the county. Secondly is if you're interested in being a poll worker, they are, the Cobb elections are still looking for folks. My daughter Abby and I sat through the clerk training on Friday, and very interesting to see, to learn a little bit about how the machines work and all that. So we'll be working a poll outside of the city on November 3rd. So I encourage you to look at it, consider putting the time in. The county can use your help. With that, a yield. Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a note of thanks for the residents that came out at our most recent walk-through in Ward Seven in Weatherbrook and Whitlinbrook. Really good turnout, really good feedback. And also, a big shout out to police, our police department, for coming out and answering some good questions, walking around the neighborhood, spending some time, and really generating some really good ideas to help improve safety and security down there. Had a really good time and look forward to doing some more at some point soon. And with that, a yield.
Mr. Bennett, anything?
No, sir. I have nothing.
Jeffrey?
No report tonight, Your Honor.
Ms. Heather?
I would just like to thank Councilmember Wagner and Gould for making the announcements regarding the voting. Additionally, to let citizens know all the information is current on the city's website, on the voter pages, as well as the Cobb County Elections website.
Thank you. Item 10 is show cause hearings. We have none. Item 11 is citizen input. We have one signed up, Tori King, but I understand that that person has left and is going to communicate with us. Okay, great. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak this evening? All right. We'll close citizen input, and if there's no other business to be brought before this body, I declare us adjourned at 7:29. Thank you, everybody.